Item one, call meeting to order, record members present and absent.
Ellis.
Here.
Harper.
Yes.
McDermott.
Ahem.
Slater.
Here.
Martin.
Here.
Item two, read the open meeting compliance statement.
I am Anderson Harper, Board of Education of the Alba Elementary School District Number One of Woods County, Oklahoma, certified that prior to December fifteen of the last calendar year, the date, time, place of the regular meeting was filed in the office of the county attorney for the county, Oklahoma. I also certified that at least twenty-four hours prior to this meeting excluding Saturdays, Sundays, and holidays, notice of the date, time, place, and agenda of this meeting was posted in prominent public view, the location of the meeting, at this time of the second day of July two thousand fifteen.
Item three, the consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved by one board vote, unless any board member desires to have a separate vote on any or all of these items. The consent agenda consists of the discussion, consideration, and approval of the following items. Three A, addition of items of new business.
None.
Three B, the minutes of June twenty-nine, two thousand fifteen, regular board meeting.
I didn't see any corrections or anything from anybody else. Check.
Three C, approval of the treasurer's report on the status of funds and investments.
Well, at the beginning of this fiscal year, you can see the open investment ledger and it's all there and things look good at this point in time. That's all I could tell you about this report. Unpaid purchase orders, as we can see, there was none at this point in time of fiscal year. You'll notice that their sum was zero balance and those are ones that we will try to clear out and take out and they just cleaned up and so forth. But, uh, starting out pretty good shape, about four hundred thousand dollars in the activity account starting fiscal year.
Did we add an account? Do we add eight twelve?
It was an existing account that we just renamed.
I approve the consent agenda items those referenced, uh, three B, the minutes, three C, the treasurer's report, and three D, the activity fund report. Second.
Slater.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Harper.
Yes.
Ellis.
Aye. Item four, vote to approve or not to approve the purchase order encumbrances for the following funds for FY two thousand sixteen. A, general fund number eleven, number one through ninety-six, with change orders one through ninety-six, and payroll number fifty thousand through fifty thousand one forty-six, but the payroll change orders fifty thousand through fifty thousand one forty-six, for a year-to-date total of seven million five hundred sixty-nine thousand six hundred and eighty dollars and thirty-one cents. B, cooperative education fund number twelve, one through twenty-eight, with change orders one through twenty-eight, and payroll fifty thousand to fifty thousand ten, with payroll change orders fifty thousand to fifty thousand ten, for a year-to-date total of four hundred and seventy-one thousand four hundred and thirty-one dollars and forty cents. C, building fund number twenty-one, one through fifteen, with change orders one through fifteen, for a year-to-date total of sixty-four thousand one hundred and sixty dollars. And D, child nutrition fund number twenty-two, one through seventeen, with change orders one through seventeen, and payroll number fifty thousand to fifty thousand five, with the change orders fifty thousand to fifty thousand five, for a year-to-date total of one hundred and ninety-four thousand seventy-four dollars and forty-four cents. And E, the gift fund senior achievement, fund number eighty-one, one through nine, with change orders one through nine, for a year-to-date total of one hundred and forty-six thousand seventy-four dollars and forty-four cents.
And again, the general fund is those items that we know and hoping P O's to go ahead and operate. And Tiffany, I think you might be interested in that twenty-five, eighty-eight thousand dollars subs.
Got that one bar. What's the time period for that?
Well, hopefully that's the first, uh, first semester. Cause you came back like April and asked about that sub and that was for the end of the year when we get there. That's a lot of money for subs per year. And then we've uncovered, we covered all of the payroll, all certified, non-certified in the general fund and also, uh, the co-op fund, got staff travel and so forth. Uh, building fund and just normal maintenance that we anticipate, so forth. Child nutrition, startup school, be able to buy the food, ready to go to school. And then that gift fund and senior achievement, um, purchase order one is our apple commitment to all of our students' apples for another year. And again, uh, shared trust is paying third and, uh, oh gosh, Alice Tate Bank paying third. And then all of our students going to scholarships or something, the Wisdom Foundation, I just went blank on that. So those are just to get a start and everything, not anything unusual with any of those.
I did have a question on, I think they're eighty-eight, eighty-nine, ninety.
Which fund?
Text, the general fund. The textbooks, we're not, we're not using the elementary textbooks on the computer.
Some we are and some we can't buy yet at that point in time. Most of the textbooks are that you're seeing at this point in time are elementary textbooks. And then, uh, I noticed that I, for biology and the sciences, they're not all on there I think for the most part what we do is we buy the hardbound and then we also get a floppy disk that the kids can go and take. But they just don't come out with just one or the other at this point in time in all of our textbook purchases.
So is there, is there a time to look forward to that happening?
Hopefully within, you know, that everything will be on that. But that means every school district in the state of Oklahoma has to do the same thing.
So are we looking at, you know, um, when do we have to get math books or when do we have to get science books or when we have, we will be getting?
We look at it both ways. I know Ron spent several hours looking at the cost of electronic textbooks compared to the harddown and accommodation and so forth. So each and every book is a little bit different, each and every grade, subjects a little bit different. So they have to make that determination and it's not one way or the other just because not everybody's in the same place in the state of Oklahoma on their electronics.
Is there a variation in the prices you were looking at? I mean, big variation?
There was, there was some, um, a lady I talked to at where we would get down that of science books, there was about a seven thousand dollar difference between the two and that was getting a hundred copies of six, seven, I think, or about a seven thousand dollar difference whether we went with hard copy, whether we went with digital, or it was actually cheaper to go with a combination of the two and go with a hard copy for the classroom, you know, have a classroom set and then have digital copies for students. And I talked to Mark about maybe putting a link to the digital copies on the website so the kids can access them to the website.
Anything else?
I just have my number eighty-one. Do we have to sign a contract with the city of Alba every year for the resource officer?
Yes.
Have we done that this year?
We are in the process.
Okay.
We do that in August, I believe, on the resource officer.
It's only August.
That's a contract from start of school to the end of school.
Any other questions on that before?
Do you need a?
In motion.
Um, I move that we accept for A, B, C, D, and E.
Second.
Martin.
Yes.
Yes.
Ellis.
Aye.
Slater.
Yes.
Don't have any resignations to give you tonight. We don't have any reassignments tonight. And strategic planning, I talked to you all about that Monday night. And again, legislation about dates, you know, communications that I am in communications with our lawyers about the agreement with Pete and Ruth Leslie Foundation and trying to get all of that taken care of. So, uh, we're in communications. I've been talking to Greg about, uh, building and so forth. So that's all still in the process. So nothing new about that and I'll continue to keep you updated on that when we get the agreement with the lawyers. Steve was in the office, I think, when I was talking to the lawyer the other day and he thought he could have the agreement and everything that we need to go ahead and proceed by Tuesday or Wednesday next week. So we'll keep you informed on that.
Six, items of current business. Six A, discussion with possible board action, vote to approve or not to approve the employment of the following certified employees for school year two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen. Six A one, Kayla Gilchrist. Six A two, Sylvia Beeler. Six A three, Mandy Egner. Six A four, Whitney Cotton.
I'll let the principals go ahead.
Okay, that's, uh, the teacher that's coming to my building, Mrs. Beeler, uh, she is moving back from, she's in the process of moving back from Arizona. She will do an outstanding job for us. Mrs. Tucker and I sat on all these interviews and we hired these ladies and are very happy to have them in our school system. We think each one of them will bring a lot to our district.
Whitney is Cotton. She is the current lead teacher director of the Big Five, oh, you're in the public house. Uh, the Big Five Head Start Program. She has the last two years and was in Woodward prior to that. And Kayla Gilchrist comes from, she's an Alba native, comes from Guiman Public Schools the past three years. And me and B, Egner, she has worked with the after-school program at Winoka and she's been a parent in Alba several years back and this will be her first year as a teacher. So we're happy to have all three of them.
Did that assistant superintendent, Guiman, ever teach you anything?
I don't remember.
Good, good answer.
I was last year, so I don't remember.
Well, with the principal's recommendation and I'd also recommend to the board that Kayla Gilchrist, Sylvia Beeler, Mandy Egner, and Whitney Cotton be hired for, uh, the two thousand sixteen school year. Speaking of the devil, my brother's trying to get a hold of me right now.
He's had a thought process happen.
Yeah. I'll call him later and let him know what happened. Or he may be hearing you live, I don't know. He listens to it all the time, he says.
Well, of course, he may have had a thought process from her.
There you go.
Do we have a motion?
I make a motion, we approve, uh, six, uh, one through six four for the two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen school year.
Second. Harper.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Ellis.
Aye.
Six B, discussion with possible board action.
Congratulations, everybody. We're happy to have you here. Much forward to having a great year. That's okay, Steve.
You're welcome to stay or not.
You're welcome to leave.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Six B, discussion with possible board action, vote to approve or not to approve the following service contracts for FY sixteen. Six B one, American Fidelity. Six M one twenty-five, flexible benefits plan. Six B two, Woods County Board of Commissioners Agreement for Services. Six B three, Circle H LLC for cleaning services.
And these are, uh, normal service contracts for FY sixteen. I'd recommend to the board that we approve these.
Is, um, the cleaning services, it's still, now, where are they going? Nothing has changed in that salary or anything?
It's high school, Lincoln, middle school, and Longville, not Washington.
Okay, and it's how much per building per month? Fifty hundred?
Yes. Two thousand at the high school. It has not increased since we started this four years ago.
Yeah, somewhere around there.
And be real honest with you, I think they did a better job last year. Their communications were better. If there are any problems that we have, it's the communications from the building to the cleaning crew. You know, if they don't let them know what's going on, then they can't go and help it. But I felt like the schools were cleaner and if we had any problems last year, we tried to work them out. The individual teachers and need to notify the principals and the principals will notify the cleaning crews that things aren't being done. So if there's a problem, it's with that communication at that point in time. But I felt like they did a lot better job last year trying to get everything clean.
I make a motion, we approve, uh, six B one through six B three for the school year.
Second.
Harper.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Ellis.
Aye.
Six C, discussion with possible board action, resolution to the Oklahoma State Department of Education of Alba Public Schools intend to use hours rather than days for the two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen school calendar.
Yeah, we still pass the calendar on one hundred and seventy-five days, but with this resolution, it gives us some leeway into any kind of snow days or disaster days or so forth. Uh, gosh, the first year that I was the acting superintendent, we missed eight days of school because of snow and other things. And because of this, this allows us to go ahead and not have to make up those things because we do go over the minimum requirement and I would make the recommendation again and again, our intent is to go one hundred and seventy-five days though.
Second.
Slater.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Harper.
Yes.
Ellis.
Aye.
Six D, discussion with possible board action, vote to approve or not to approve the revisions to the extra duty salary schedule for FY sixteen.
On your salary schedule itself, that track, middle school assistant track, boys and girls, should have seven hundred and fifty dollars on the front, first page. Middle school assistant track, boys and girls, seven hundred and fifty dollars. That's the only thing that we've added to this particular schedule. And the reason we did that is that when we were looking at our athletic teams and so forth in the spring, girls track at the middle school, boys track, they may have sixty kids out there at one time. And so we thought maybe an assistant coach could go back and forth from one to the other would help, plus also on track meets to help with all the kids that are involved. So.
Who's gonna do the assistant?
Uh, I believe Mike Cliflin. And that will be on the next year. So I think everything's cleaned up from what we did in the committee. And I'd recommend to you again, the corrections there.
The addition or are just approved?
That seven hundred and fifty dollars needs to be added.
Well, you know what it stated in there? Is that not a revision? I'm just asking. I thought it was.
Okay, okay.
If you, guys, when you make the motion, if you'll include the seven hundred and fifty dollar addition to the middle school track.
Questions?
Is that the only revision or there's other?
There are other revisions in there. Just clean up. Uh, like the, oh, Saturday school, I think we add, it's still the old, uh, I can't find it.
And on the very back page, on the summer school, is that on the last one?
Yes. Wait. The summer school and the S E Y service for apparel was twenty, uh, and we tried to make teachers all twenty-five dollars an hour and that's the only. And then if you go over to homebound teachers, twenty-five, on that one, we had twenty as one, one is twenty-five. So we made that all consistent that way.
I move that we approve the extra duty schedules with the revisions referenced in addition to adding the seven hundred and fifty dollars for the middle school, girls and boys track.
Second.
Slater.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Harper.
Yes.
Ellis.
Aye.
Six E, discussion with possible board action, vote to approve or not to approve the extra duty assignments for FY two thousand sixteen.
I think we have all of them, but we may have to bring you back sometime since somebody else comes up. But these are all the extra duty assignments and as the administrators gave to us, we worked on and that's for, and with the new, if any of them got raises, it's reflected there.
I make a motion, we approve the extra duty assignments for two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen school year.
Second.
Harper.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Ellis.
Aye.
Six F, discussion with possible board action, vote to approve or not to approve the support personnel salary schedule for FY sixteen.
Uh, this is the same salary schedule that we raised last year and it reflects that annual increase and I would recommend to the board that we go and continue with the support personnel salary schedule for fiscal year two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen.
Martin.
Yes.
Harper.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Ellis.
Aye.
Six G, discussion with possible board action, vote to approve or not to approve the administrative salary schedule for FY sixteen.
And again, this is how we determine the salary for each administrator, the city high school principal, one point three five, middle school, one point three, elementary principal, one point two, and then additional, one point oh five, to appoint secondary elementary coordinators. And I'd recommend this to Board of Education.
I move that we approve the administrative salary schedule as referenced in item six G. Second.
Slater.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Harper.
Yes.
Ellis.
Aye.
Six H, discussion with possible board action, vote to approve or not to approve the revision of Alba Board of Education policy, D E E, as presented at the June twenty-nine, two thousand fifteen meeting.
And again, we're asking to, you approve this policy to raise the one meal to twenty-five dollars and to the day to, from a forty to a fifty-five dollar increment. And I would make this recommendation to the board.
Second.
Martin.
Yes.
Harper.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Ellis.
Aye.
Six I, discussion with possible board action, vote to approve or not to approve the following principals as administrative coordinators for FY two thousand sixteen. Six I one, Tim Argo, elementary coordinator. Six I two, Les Parer, secondary coordinator.
And I would make that motion to the board, the duty is going to be primarily making sure that all of the elementary reports and all of the secondary reports and any questions that we have, that they would be responsible and working directly with me and taking care of some of those state reports that I have been doing, anticipating some building and so forth in the future. I'd make that recommendation to the board. I'd make that recommendation to the board.
Guess you guys are okay with that?
Kind of like, do you have a choice?
I make a motion, we approve the administrative coordinators for 2015-2016 school year. Tim Argo and Les Potter.
Second?
Harper?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ellis?
Aye. Item 7, there was new business. I made signing of documents approved by early action.